Call to me any Twitter, please rise for to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Just to advise the board on a point of order, we just came in contact with some information. There is a trip, a robotics trip that must be approved by the board because it's an overnight stay. There was a late communication to us just now. The superintendent clarified it and we will be approving, we'll be bringing forward a motion later on this evening to approve the overnight trip for the robotics class.
Overnight out of state.
Out of state and overnight.
We're at that.
Right. Yeah, we'll refresh it as soon as Vince gives us the word and go ahead. Once we have that, we will bring it up for approval. Call for a motion for the acceptance of the minutes of the February 11th, 25 minute. It's been moved. Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Public forum for this evening. There is no one for public forum for this evening.
First, it's going to be the Ulster County media.
We'll bring up Tim Lukaszewski and Jennifer Ryan to talk about the Ulster County Student Media Contest. Tim and Jen?
She's gonna, she's got the awards. If you can ask the kids if you want to have them shake everyone's hand.
Good evening. You guys hear me? Alright, I'd like to just welcome Jen Ryan here today from Ulster County Prevention Council. She's the Community Relations Coordinator, if I'm correct? Court, Community Prevention Coordinator. We had students in across my classes compete in an Ulster County Media Contest of doing posters, doing radio PSAs, and doing video PSAs. And we happened to get first place in all three of those, as you can see on the border up there. So Jen's here to present the kids with their awards. Here she is.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me here. It's great to see that the kids get recognized in a forum like this. I'm glad that I was able to come and do that. Every year, Ellenville never fails to, you know, bring home quite a few winning submissions. We had a lot of submissions. It's for all 6th through 12th grade in all of Ulster County school districts. So out of all of those, you can see I have a whole bunch here. The judges had a really hard time because there were so many great submissions, but you can see three out of four of those went to Ellenville students, so we're really proud of that. So I'm gonna go ahead and start with the first place poster submission. That winner was Ernesto Santa Maria.
If you take a look up on the screen, you'll see the poster. Can you, Ernesto, you want to come around and shake the board's hand?
We're really proud of you.
Yeah.
Alright, our next first place winner was for radio PSA submission. That winner is Eva Orfanos.
Yes, Eva could not be here tonight because she is performing in the concert, that's at the choir concert. So she's actually, does multitasking. I'll play the radio piece for you now.
So while he queues that up, I'm sorry, was there a theme to this year's competition?
There were two, it's usually the same two categories.
Hey, everyone. Today, I'd like to talk about teenage vaping. Although it may seem like a harmless trend amongst teens, the truth is much more troubling. Here are some main reasons why teenage vaping is harmful and why we must act upon it. First and foremost, vaping poses significant health risks. Many e-cigarettes contain nicotine, which can harm brain development, particularly in teenagers. This addiction can lead to long-term health problems, including respiratory issues. Moreover, vaping affects academic and social life adversely. Nicotine dependence results in low concentration, poor memory, and in general, poor performance at school. Furthermore, teenagers who vape may be more likely to be involved in other hazardous behaviors, which of course will affect their future prospects and overall well-being. In all, teen vaping is a serious problem. Extremely hazardous to health. It exposes youth to very dangerous chemicals that could further affect their academic and social life. It is of prime importance to inform you all about the dangers, and I encourage healthier, safer choices. Together, we can create a healthier future for our youth.
She has a lovely voice.
She does.
She's into radio, but to answer your question, there were two categories. There can either be healthy alternatives to substance use, or the dangers and consequences of... Sorry. Usually I can talk loud enough. Or the dangers or consequences of substance use, which can be anything. Most of the time, they focus a lot on vaping and tobacco usage, which seems to be the prevalent thing that we're seeing in the schools right now. The last category we have...
Just so I don't want to, she will be here at the next board meeting to get her award, so she's coming to the next board meeting.
Perfect. The last one is our big one, our $250 winner, and that goes to three students, actually, who worked together for the video. Devin Oquenda, Eli Pickle, and Gabe Polka. I don't know who's...
Are they here?
Devin was unable to attend because he got called into work.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Y'all, thanks for picking me up. Where are we going?
Hey, man, we're going to a party, man. You ready?
Yeah.
Mr. Al, can you turn it up?
Are those drinks?
Heck yeah, man, we're going to a party. What's you expect?
I don't want to be a part of this anymore.
Wait, what? Yo, yo, dude, where you going?
Y'all, thanks for picking me up. Where are we going?
Hey, man, we're going to a party, man. You ready?
Yeah. Are those drinks?
Heck yeah, man, we're going to a party. What's you expect?
I don't want to be a part of this anymore.
Wait, what? Yo, yo, dude, where you going?
Out.
Dude, what do you mean, "out"? You sure you don't want to go?
Come on, I gotta go.
Say, dude, we got the girl, we got the drinks, we got everything. Come on.
If Devin decided not to drink and drive, he would still be here right now. According to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, about 37 people in the United States die in drunk driving crashes every day. That's one person every 39 minutes. About 11,000 people die per year in drunk driving traffic deaths. Devin is one of those people now.
That one on, with the panelists on our Substance Abuse Prevention Board were the judges for this particular contest, and that, the video one was unanimous as the number one for everybody. So it was a really good job. They did an amazing job. Thank you.
Great job. Great job.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to say that Mr. Lukaszewski, I've recommended your group to a couple of the videos with the Rural Schools Association, and then what Ms. Ryan brought to us today. Sometimes I actually feel sorry for the other schools who went through these contests because your students are so outstanding, and a lot of credits to you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Lukaszewski.
So, Mr. President, if I, did I hear correctly that there was a cash award for each one of those winnings?
Ms. Ryan?
Where are you going?
You can't get out with Willie, so you're done.
Were there cash awards with those?
Yes, they are actually gift cards.
Ah, wonderful.
So with the three, they've got split it, however they want to split it, but the other two.
Spectacular.
Yeah, so, and we will have another one in the fall. We may do another one in the spring, but it'll be a TikTok challenge.
Great.
So something that the kids are more into. So, again, like you said, I feel sorry for other schools too. I try to give them, like you do, but...
Hey, drive safe.
Drive safe. So we're gonna bring up for our next presentation for some more awards, but first, we're gonna bring up Jonah Shanker and Carl Pabone to talk about the Schools USA Regional Competition, and Sally Taton. I'd also like to recognize our representative to the school boards, Ulster County School Boards Association, Ms. Marla Kaplan. She's here in the audience. Thank you, Marla, for joining us, and for all you do with that association.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us to share a couple of words. I'm gonna give you just kind of a brief overview, and then I'll turn it over to Sal Ligatino, who's one of our teachers at the Career and Tech Center in our Manufacturing and Robotics Class, and gives just an incredible amount of time after-school weekends for Skills USA. Skills USA is a professional organization for career and technical centers around the country, and really what it is about is, you know, helping these students become skilled professionals, foster leadership, and really think about what it means to be a contributing community member. It's a fantastic organization, and at Ulster BOCES, unlike many of the other career and technical centers who have a small cohort, we have moved to a full participation program. That means all of the students have access to Skills USA, and it's really become kind of an infrastructure and fabric to the work that the students and staff do each and every day. We have amazing students, shared students from Ellenville, who do amazing things in these competitions. If you ever have an opportunity to visit or see one of the skills competitions, I know they have them in, last one was in orange, Ulster BOCES. We intend, in our new site, to become a host, but it's a wonderful opportunity to come see what is happening in these competitions. Really, really, just a beautiful day of learning, and students that are connecting and forming partnerships. So I'll turn it over to Sal, talk a little bit about the structure, and then honor some of the students.
Thank you, Dr. Shanker. He really did not quite convey what he just said to everybody. We are a total participation school. What that means is, everybody else who's not a total participation school has to fundraise to go to these events, and it costs a considerable amount of money. BOCES is picking up the entire tab for all the students, so it removes any socio-economical barrier that is in front of anybody and allows all of our students to participate, and they're all Skills USA members. Yeah, it is amazing what they have done for these kids. The hair in the back of my neck is standing up right now because it's a huge, that's huge. Anyway, our students are amazing in what they do, and just wanted to explain, you know, what it is. You know, we competed regionally recently. The next level is states, and we have several students going on to states. That's gonna be at the fairgrounds in Syracuse. And then from there, if they place in first, now they go on to nationals, which will be in Atlanta. And then the next step is worlds, if they win there. But even at the national level, it's at a whole new level. You're now competing with all the first-place winners from the other states in your field as a, whatever the field may be, showing your skills. Quite amazing. And there, they have colleges, they have businesses that show up and actively try to recruit all the kids. There's major prizes given in the field by people. Really quite something. If you get a chance, you really should see what the kids are doing, the young professionals are doing in skills. So now we have, I'll just call the names then. We have some awards? Yeah.
Hot potato. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure. Just a fun fact here. Out of the 37 students that medaled from our region, nine of them come out of Ellenville. And I think that's interesting considering that there are eight schools within our region, and to have nine students out of 37 is something to be extremely proud of. That's a significant number. With that said, I'm going to mention those that are here today, others that were planning. I don't know, they had some obstacles that prevented them from arriving, so I'll mention those who are here, and I'll begin with someone that was speeding to get here, but she made it right out of work, and that is Madison Shaw. She placed first in Information Technology Services. Madison Shaw. You can go shake everyone's hand and come back for your award.
Please check out the gold medal around her neck. That was her regional gold medal that she won.
Mr. Ligatomo, while she's making the rounds, can you tell us what the skill was? And we know what it's in, but can you just give us a quick description of what...
The information technology that Madison was in is, we have cybersecurity and networking. And so she is in that class with Dr. Landers. Amazing opportunities in that classroom.
Wonderful. So it's like a software skills?
Yes.
Based, okay, thank you.
And very competitive too, so that around her neck is amazing.
What certifications are you working on?
Right now, we are working on internetworking, networking, switching, and we just finished up our international first university courses.
So, Ms. Shanker, Alice, I'm sorry, Madison. Madison is a VOTEC student, and she is working on certification. Pete, she's, pardon me, you're a PTEC student. You were just here. Yes. Hi, Madison. So Madison is in the program, and she will graduate with certifications?
Well, certifications, I believe there's 10 or 12 industry-based certifications that again, aren't, aren't, you know, BOCES-driven. These are industry standards.
Yes.
You're also in PTEC, so most likely you'll graduate with an associate's degree in these certifications and will be, you know, probably picking who she wants to work for day one. That's kind of how it's gonna work for you, I would imagine.
And those are the competitive edges that these programs give our students.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madison. Very well done.
One more time, Madison Shaw. Congratulations. This time, we also have Gabriel Julka, who placed first for internetworking. Fun fact, I never knew internetworking was one word. Had to look it up.
I think you left one out. He's also the valedictorian this year.
That's right.
Another PTEC student as well. I think we can safely say that this is a great way to get an inside look at what PTEC produces for our district. Certainly a great, a great program with outstanding students doing outstanding things. So thank you for having, you know, for coming here and sharing everything with us, and thank you for your hard work and everything you're doing for the district. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to present Henry Jones, who placed third in the Quiz Bowl. At this time, everyone, Henry Jones.
Also a PTEC student.
Mr. Pabone, what is Quiz Bowl, please?
So Quiz Bowl is, they have to study within a set of parameters for a particular, they have it up for all different categories. I think there's one for cosmetology, one for just a general Quiz Bowl. They're given parameters, they all need to study that, and then they're asked a series of questions as a team, and they have to answer it. And when they answer it right, or answer all the highest right questions wins.
Also Cisco student?
Yeah.
Three in the Cisco cybersecurity, like two-year sequence at the Career Tech Center.
Phenomenal. Thank you.
Also placing third in the Quiz Bowl, we have Jonathan Torres.
So as John walks around, Jonathan is shaking his hand. He made all the t-shirts for our robotics team this year. He's in manufacturing, and I, I'm sorry, I wish I had one here to show you. They really came out, and I forgot. I did bring other stuff, though, that some Ellenville students made. I'll share with you after the awards.
That's alright. Mr. Torres, I think you're nine shirts short, maybe. Alright, we'll have another, we'll have another meeting next, in two weeks, you can bring them there. Well done.
So I would like to mention the names of those who could not attend, and also what they placed in. Placing first in job interview was Alan Ibric. Additionally, placing third in the Quiz Bowl was Kwaku Bohan. Furthermore, in the Quiz Bowl, placing third, Phoebe Baker, along with Miguel Cabba, placing second in automated manufacturing. And last but not least, Amora Williams, placing second in automated manufacturing. All these teams, all these students placed, and again, they were nine out of 37 students within the region that medaled. So kudos to all our students and their hard work and their teachers.
Really?
So I have some goodies. So part of the robotics competition, there's literally thousands of kids. It's like crazy how many kids are there, but we have to make swag. And so this year, the swag that we made, there's pins that are handed out. And there's also a keychain that was made. This keychain is really cool. This was done by, oh my god, Emily Reban came up with the design. Also, the design for the shirts that John made for us, and also the pins. Emily made the pins as well. So they were also put together by Lillian Horvath. She was another one that was helping the manufacturing end of it.
Thank you.
I think one other thing that's worth, one other thing that's worthy of pointing out, Mr. Pabone, is that all nine of the students out of the 37 are PTEC students here in our school district. So what a credit to the PTEC program as well.
Mr. Ligatomo, who are the Robotic Rams?
Robotic Rams is the team for AM BOCES. So anyone in the AM class is part of the Robotic Rams. The PM class, we have two actual teams that are gonna be competing. You're welcome.
So, Mr. Ligatomo, we are an extremely jealous district. If I put this on my shirt right now, will I be?
I think you'd be okay.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sal, we do have, we have one more board member who's not here with us tonight, so if you could leave that at her place. Thank you. Yes, she wouldn't want to miss it.
Mr. Ligatomo, what would it take to have these made for Ellenville specifically?
I would say just an email.
Thank you, Mr. Ligatomo.
Thanks, Sal.
It's a...
Because of how amazing job that Emily did on this particular project with our logo for our team, one of the PM students who works for local manufacturing firm Woodstock, saw it, and his boss brought the shirt and a logo design.
And that's Mr. Ligatino. Thank you very much. Willie, it's Mr. Ligatino.
Mr. Ligatino, I'm sorry. Please apologize. Next time I see you, I'll call you Ligatino.
Ligatomo, Ligatino, whatever.
If we do have Ellenville students who...
He's a fellow Highlander, so I went to, I went to school with his brother.
If we do have students who place and need to move on to state or national competition, I will make sure that you have those names well in advance of five minutes before the meeting. So appreciate that. My apologies, Superintendent Wiles. We will sort through that.
Thank you so much.
Alright, so we'll move on to our next. Will be the same, but our next presentation is from Ulster County BOCES, our annual visit from Dr. Shanker. Welcome again.
Yes, different topic, but good evening. Want to just share with you kind of a high-level overview of the BOCES budget this year. I will give you a quick I-Park update as well. But really just want to start with a thank you to the Ellenville Board, Administration, for your partnership and support. As I enter my second year of district superintendent, it's become very apparent about the critical relationships needed to do this work. This isn't about my ideas. I love to bring ideas to the table, but this is, this is about me and in turn, the team at Ulster BOCES, gaining a deeper and better understanding about who you are and what you all need, so that we can build programs to help augment your vision. There are a tremendous amount of changes that are upon us through the New York State Education Department with graduation measures, decoupling of regions' assessments, all amazing work. And we are set up in a very special way in this county. It isn't, it isn't the case in every region where we have component superintendents, BOCES, really working collaboratively to think about, how can we make sure that all students, regardless of what district they're from, have access to robust programming, opportunities? And those conversations are rich, and really, just on the record, want to thank Superintendent Wiles, who has been a colleague, a mentor to me, an asset in this role. So thank you. I appreciate you deeply, and in turn, your team, but you get a special shout out. So thank you.
How much money are you looking for?
It's really amazing because I ask a lot of questions.
Well, I wasn't gonna say that, but...
Well, I'll admit it.
I called it partnership. No, we do. We have, we have, we have an amazing working relationship, and I'm glad to be able to be of support, be the arm of the state for... For those of you who don't know, the district superintendent role has two prongs. One is the CEO of the BOCES, and the other is the district superintendent, and that is a direct report to the commissioner. And so I'm up in Albany often, kind of bringing back information, but also bringing up information up to Albany about the needs here in Ellenville, the needs in Kingston and Rondau and so on and so forth. So we have a current department who is responsive and want to hear the voice of the district so that as we think about this state and the shifts, you can see your vision in that path forward. So it's exciting, exciting work. So you have a paper copy here, can't see this. This is really just a high-level overview of how Ellenville participates with BOCES. So on the left side in the blue column, those are, those are the cosers or the services that you can join, the cooperative services. You'll see the ones that have, have the bullet that's filled in white. Those are the services that Ellenville participates in. The other, there are other ones that aren't filled in. Those are services that Ellenville doesn't choose to participate. And then you can see here, number of students in career and technical education, our Center for Innovative Teaching and Learning. You have no current P-Tech students because you have an in-house P-Tech that, but both of those P-Techs are working very closely, very, very closely. So that's exciting. And then you'll see the aidable services and the aid that was generated there. So that's just real high-level overview. So just want to give you kind of an update on the I-Park project. We have shifted the footprint. So after conversations about the viability of one of the buildings, that we were intended to have part of our program, we, we've now re-centered our program in the main building. Initially, we had kind of a big U-shaped around the courtyard, and there was a single long hallway. It would have worked as at the school. It would have, it would have, we would have been able to get, you know, a certificate of occupancy from SED. But this change is a huge asset. It really centers us in the center of the building. From a school safety and transportation standpoint, it's a far better layout. You could see the bottom, the bottom drawing is our first floor. And we now have, in allowing or negotiating this change, we were able to capture an additional almost 20,000 square feet upstairs to make room for the county to be able to fit in. And because we made that concession, they gave us the full top floor at the same price that we had negotiated. So we gained almost 20,000 square feet, same price. So a huge, huge asset for that. Again, that's kind of the layout. The light blue is the BOCES program, bottom floor. If you're, if you're looking at the main building that was, that kind of the entryway for IBM, that has the clock tower, this is that building. And so you'll enter to the right will be the county space in the green. We now have access to the whole front loop, so we'll be able to have just a pure dedicated bus drop-off. Previous drawing had the bus loop snaking through the parking lot. Again, many districts have that. We have that currently. This is far more ideal to be able to have dedicated bus loop. And again, just the, the single kind of centered linear program with first floor and second floor allows for just again, a school safety proximity. It's far more ideal. These are some renderings of the actual space. So the interior of the building, we are going to be, rather than having overhead garage doors on the exterior, which again, presents some school safety issues, we will have entrance and egress to be able to move large equipment, vehicles in. But all of our opening garage doors are all on the interior. The idea is to create a space that's flexible, that at night, we can pivot the building to an exhibition hall for industry, open up the garage doors and have thousands of square feet to showcase the work that you heard even a little bit about today from those skills students. So really excited about that. Again, just another rendering from the outside. I was, I was up there about a week and a half ago. The rooms are studded out, and you can actually, when you're standing in there, kind of get a, get a real feel of the magnitude of what this facility is going to be. It's really going to be a special place. The superintendents will be visiting. We'll be holding our next monthly superintendent's meeting there. And so we'll do a walkthrough, and then we'll have our meeting in the finished space, which is archtop fiber. But again, I just want to thank you all for your, your support. This, this opportunity for Ulster County students is going to be unlike anywhere else in the state, and I would venture to say anywhere else in the country. It really is going to be a lighthouse for what's possible. So our career and technical students are going to have a premier facility, which, which they deserve. So thank you so much for that. I will now turn it over to Amanda, take you through some numbers, and then take some questions if you have them.
Just for my difference in height. Thank you guys for having us back again this year. It's always nice to have your board invite us out. Not every district takes advantage of that opportunity, and we do appreciate being able to come out and share our budget story with the districts. So the first slide you'll see here has some information on students and what programs they're in. You have that. You probably can't see anything up there, but you have that in your packet, and you'll be able to see which career and tech program students are in, and a few of the special ed students and where they are. The next thing I want to go over is the budget. So BOCES budget is comprised of three parts. We have the administrative budget, the capital budget, and the program budget. The admin budget contains information on board of ed costs, administrative costs, and post-retiree benefits. The capital budget contains all of our leases, and a capital investment from the component districts into our capital investments for BOCES. The program services are all signed up by districts, so we conduct initial service requests, final service requests, and the districts sign up for purchase services through BOCES. So the only budget that the BOCES, the component boards of the BOCES pass is the administrative budget. And here, we have a description of what's in the administrative budget. So we have salaries, equipment supplies, contractual. And all the way to the right, you'll see what percentage of the budget makes up. You'll see that the majority of the administrative budget is made up of retiree benefits. Our board is working very diligently to keep that number... Sorry, Vince told me I'm too far from the microphone. You'll see that the administrative budget is made up mostly of the retiree benefits. And our board is working to keep that number closed. I think if I do this, I'll deal better. Thanks. Okay. So the Ellenville, as you can see, the administrative budget is broken down by ARWADA. And the way that it works is it averages out for the components, the eight components of Ulster BOCES. And although we had a 2% increase this year for our administrative budget, Ellenville's proportion of that is actually a negative 0.43%, so a decrease of just a little over $2,000 for the '25-'26 year. In addition to that, we have the capital budget. The capital budget is made up of the leases. Now, we did keep our capital increase at a 0% with the exception of the I-Park lease. So we know that the I-Park lease is going to be a big portion of your budget. It's a big increase. However, we did keep the remaining leases and the amounts in that budget at a 0% increase, so that it would give you a little bit of a cushion there. And due to the change in ARWADA's, again, probably if you go back to the I-Park slides, this number here is a decrease. While it's a big increase of $132,000 for the coming year, it's less than what we had anticipated when we came out to the boards to talk about the I-Park lease. ARWADA, ARWADA is the resident weighted average daily attendance. So basically, the state breaks down a formula, and it has to do with not only students in your area, but also the real estate assessments, the assessed values. So a lot of districts are seeing some trouble because they're having decreased enrollments. People are moving into the area. Maybe it's a second home. Maybe they don't have children, but it's driving up our real estate prices. And that's coming into effectness of the formula. So some districts are really suffering. If I go back a slide, you can see, it's easier to see in the administrative budget because the capital's so different. But in the admin budget, you can see that Rondau and Sorgetes, because of their changes, because they're, like, Rondau had a significant, they're one of the highest in the state's increased property values, and it's affecting the formula. So they're actually, their shift is changing their ARWADA and making them get a greater percentage. So it's making some districts seem wealthier than they actually are, so it's falsely kind of driving up the number. But it's based on a number of factors, and it's a formula that the state doesn't, BOCES doesn't have any control over the ARWADA. And so what we do have control over is what our unit price increases are. So excluding the admin and capital, because I wanted to take out that large increase for capital, about a 2.39% increase in our services for this year. I know last year, we came around and we had a 4.5% increase, and we're really trying to work on stabilizing those. We want to acknowledge that we understand that you have budget restraints, and so we're trying to keep those close. But the things that are driving it up are our contracted salary benefits and vendor costs that we are unable to control. This slide also, you probably won't be able to see up here, but you can see it in, in your packet. And what I wanted to point out was, if you see the first number that's kind of in the orange box, this is a total dollar amount of services that are eligible for BOCES aid. So anything that's eligible for BOCES aid was in last year, $4.3 million. So it doesn't include any of your special ed students because they have an excess cost aid, so it's a separate formula. But what you can see is from the $4 million, by the time you get your BOCES aid and your BOCES refund, the net cost of that participation and the $4.3 million worth of programming is actually $1.267 million. I think that's an important number to highlight. So it shows that with the aid and the refund, you actually are getting a really good value for the services purchased. And any questions for Dr. Shanker or myself?
I just want, I'm sorry, to point something out. I just have a question. On the page where you show the Ellenville student enrollment, I know this is, is that only the Ulster County BOCES programs or, because I don't see heavy machinery. We have students that go to Sullivan BOCES.
Oh, yes. Only Ulster BOCES.
This is only, only Ulster. So I just think it's important for the board to know, when you look at your budget numbers, we have other BOCES that we participate with, and that's only for programs that Ulster BOCES does not offer.
We're looking to bring back as many of these programs to the I-Park facility. So the building arts, heavy machinery, as we look at kind of scaling up and the new facility, our hope is to have Ulster County students educated in Ulster County. But of course, sometimes we need to lean on our BOCES partners for programs that we might not offer.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Shank. I was just kind of glancing over him. John, go ahead.
Dr. Shank, congratulations on your new I-Park facility, and we always look forward to having you. I have to admit, as you know, that I always ask how much it's going to cost us, just as Phil did. And when I started to look through the papers, and I saw that our administrative course was down by 0.43%, you got me. Until the very next page that it turned over in our capital budget project was 175.89% increase. So I have my answer already, but I understand the undertaking that you do, and I think it's going to really help not only our students, but all the students in the county, and keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Anybody else? Willie?
I second Trustee Burns's comments, and I have a couple of questions regarding the enrollment as well. So we have 135 students between 11th and 12th grade that attend the CTE programs at Ulster BOCES.
Yep, correct.
So how many, do we know how many students are in the 11th and 12th grade currently, roughly?
Roughly, I would say 240. I would say anywhere between 220 and 240, I'd say that.
So well over half of the current 11th and 12th grade students attend some program at BOCES, Ulster County BOCES, CTE? That's great. Okay, thank you.
I just, I'll add to that, just as, interesting data, throughout New York State, we know enrollment is declining, but career and technical education enrollment is increasing, and that is in New York and beyond. So that's interesting. Across New York, we are, if not first, we have the highest percentage of juniors and seniors in a particular BOCES region who attend career and technical education as part of their 11th and 12th grade sequence. So about 3,300 students in the county who are juniors and seniors, and about 1,400 of those, well, next year, but about 1,300 and chains, who are juniors and seniors attending the program. So 40, 40 to 50% of all juniors and seniors attending. I think it's a testament to, to the programming, and also the willingness of the districts to acknowledge that, that this is a robust pathway to graduation. So, so exciting, exciting data and interesting.
And the awareness of the kids, right? It takes a certain level of intelligence to recognize an opportunity like those that you present through the CTE programs.
Yeah. I mean, we, I don't have the slides here, but through our workplace learning, students who are embedded in jobs in the community right now. I mean, you know, five, six years ago, we had 12 students out. This year, we'll have 375 students out. Our current student that are in paid internships are averaging $10,700 a week in earnings, that these students are, that are in paid internships. And those students are then shopping at stores, spending money at restaurants. I mean, it really is, Ulster BOCES is the largest economic workforce development driver in the county. So that's exciting. And many of those students go to four-year colleges, many of them go to two-years colleges, some of them go directly into job and/or certification programs. So it isn't just a pathway to work. It really is a pathway to a lot of different opportunities. So, yeah.
Thank you. Iris?
Thank you for the presentation. It's very interesting. I've always been impressed by BOCES work. I'm interested in knowing how students are recruited into your program. What part do you play in recruiting our students to participate?
So each one of the districts can operate in a different way. I don't have the specifics, I was looking to see if Carl was here, for Ellenville, but I know our workplace learning encounters come here. They have, and set up informational sessions. We have recruitment day, which I think was today. So district buses, sophomores, they pick one or two programs, and they spend some time there. And then we have open house that, you know, again, hopefully, a student goes to, you know, recruitment day, goes home and says, "Hey, I'm thinking about aviation. I was in this cool opportunity," and then a parent or guardian can come check out the program. We're always thinking how we can make that more accessible. We know that transportation is difficult, and it's not, it's not close. But I know that really is driven between the building principal, you know, I'm sure Carl and/or Scott Landry on the BOCES side. I could, I could find out exactly what the activities that have happened here.
I'd be interested in knowing that.
So we'll find that out. I'll share that with Superintendent Wiles, and she can share that with the board, but I'll find out exactly. I'll find out exactly what the recruitment, yep.
Thank you, John.
Dr. Shank, with the districts that you've listed here, Kingston is obviously a city school district, maybe New Paltz. The others are particularly rural schools, and the talk has always been about collaboration between districts, beyond signing agreements for individual students. Are you seeing more shared services between districts, and is that a way that we're going to move in?
So I think historically, our county has been ahead of the curve about talking about what that looks like. There are conversations that are happening right now. And again, I'll point to an example, just a couple of years ago, we saw a tremendous need for students who were showing up to school with significant therapeutic needs, who, there was a gap in short-term kind of bridge programming. So a student who has a significant life event, suicidal ideations, we know we can't put that student on a waiting list for six weeks. We know that county mental health services have been stripped out and they're diminished. And so we came together as a group and thought about what short-term programming would look like. Two years later, we have the TTP and LTTP. That's a therapeutic transition program, that's a five- or six-week bridge, an acute situation, getting the student in right away, getting significant therapeutic support, that's a partnership with ASTER. And then we begin to phase that student back into district, so there's transition planning coming in and coming out. We also recognize that some of those students needed a longer program, so we created the LTTP, which is long-term therapeutic, for a placement that could last up to a year. And that was eight superintendents saying, okay, we need this, let's figure out what it costs, let's divide those costs proportionately by that ARWADA formula. And we've got some districts who may have only used one seat, some who are using five, but it's the willingness to come together to make sure that we have that, and think about kind of this web of care in Ulster County. There is a whole list of other items, which we're coming together, just I think next week, around how can we better collaborate? What are the areas? One of the areas that's top of list, I know here for Ellenville, for me personally, is programming for students who express themselves through more aggressive and outward behavior, really, really difficult students to place. There is a lack of services. We need to think collectively, not only as a county, but as a region. And to that end, you know, I'm meeting with the other DS, Sullivan Duchess, and Orange Ulster to talk about regional efforts. And then there's a list of other programming, access to AP courses, college. We ought to be able to solve, thinking across district boundaries about how to make sure that just because you live here, you don't have this.
Thank you. One last thing, surprisingly or not surprisingly, we haven't heard anything from the governor or the commissioner on the great electric bus proposals. Have you heard anything in your visits north to get any other information for us?
They talk about it every month, but no new information. You know, I keep the superintendents updated. They're, you know, I believe that there is, there's still a want for it to happen. I think from what I'm hearing is that they're listening a little bit about the viability in certain areas, the timeline, to get it done, but nothing, nothing formal at this point.
I just hope it dies a slow death, because the costs are so drastic compared to what we're paying for transportation now. I just can't see it happening, but we get, like you just said, no direction from up above. Thank you.
Your sentiment is shared by many.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Shanker. Thank you, Amanda. Wonderful presentation. We love having you, so come back real soon. And take your time going over the mountain.
All right, thank you so much. Have a beautiful night, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move on to budget presentations. Mr. Napoli?
Thank you very much. Tonight is the last department detail workshop. We're going to be covering BOCES, that's why we had Jonah and Amanda come down. So as of right now, unless some numbers change, I know that our health insurance numbers might be changing. D HIC is going to be meeting, hopefully, one day this week or next to finalize the rates for health insurance. But right now, the draft budget is $68.6 million. That's roughly a 5.95% budget increase. And the tax cap, which I submitted this weekend, is at 4.52%. The next slide that I have will give us a little history of what our tax levy has looked like since 1718. You see some of the years it has been around 2%, but recently, due to the exemptions, and I've talked about these ad nauseam in the past, but I'd be happy to sit down with anybody who wants to go over the tax cap formula, to share the details with them. But this is a little history of what our tax levies have looked like in the past. They are all within the tax cap. That's often a question that people ask me, is our tax levy within the tax cap? That's something that I have to answer to the controller, and I will share that most schools that try to pierce the tax cap, their budgets fail. Only a small percentage that go above what their tax levy is, do their budgets actually pass. So tonight with me, I have our special education administrators. We're going to start off with our special education BOCES budget and our special education budget. I've got Jessica and Kristen here. So if we have any special education questions, they're going to maybe grab a microphone at a table, or they can come up here and address any questions that they have. So as in the other department detail budgets that I've presented, I'll hit some of the high-level lines. So in special education, and you all have this in your packet, it's in Board docs, and it'll be up on our website tomorrow, non-BOCES tuition, that's our private schools students, special education students that do not go to a BOCES program, is up 32.29%. The overall special education budget is up around $1.5 million. Jessica did a great job, there's a narrative that everyone has kind of talking about why special ed, why our budget is up so much.
Can she tell the public that while she's here?
We certainly can have her do that.
Thank you.
So once I run through special ed, I'll have Jessica come line up. Our private schools, which are residential programs, that's up just under $1 million, 372%. And then summer tuition for our special education students is up $21,000. Jessica, if you want to come up and just kind of talk about why your budget is up as
Good evening, everyone. So in your packets, you'll find just a budget narrative breakdown, so I'll go over that so that the public can hear as well. We looked at really the transfer, so from the last time we were having the budget conversation, so let's say March of 2024 to today, what has transpired in the Department of Special Education for Ellenville. So we've had seven students transfer into district. They transferred in as out-of-district place students, so their profile is reviewed, their placement is already in an out-of-district setting due to their level of need not being able to be met in district. So we maintain their placement in that out-of-district placement, and/or because they moved from a different state, we look for a comparable program that is here, but it is an out-of-district program. So you can see there, from June of 2024 to October of 2024, we've had seven students that fall under that category. Over the course of the last year, March to March, we've had seven students that previously were in-district students that transferred due to their level of need to an out-of-district program. So highlighted in your packets are where the students were accepted. You'll see that some of those are BOCES placements, like Ulster and Sullivan, and some are private Then we have our CPSE to CSE students. So what I've been trying to do over the course of the summer is, we have the annual meeting, but before that, I've been delaying that meeting a little bit to get out to the preschool setting, to be able to see our little ones, and see how they are being maintained in the setting that they're in, and determine if they can come into our general education 1211 or 1212 program, or if we cannot maintain that level of need, and they need more of like a 611 or an 812. So four students, you'll see there, one in May, one in June, and two in July, we needed to go to a more restrictive placement. So that totals that overall 18 students from right around this time last year to now, that have either come into our district and/or their level of need went up significantly, and we can no longer maintain here in district. In addition, I have two notations there. So since October of '24, we've had seven additional students, so in addition to that 18, we've had seven additional students either transfer into the district and/or have been deemed no longer able to have their needs met in district, and they required an out-of-district placement. Those students, we have some that are currently home pending placement, because it is no longer safe to keep them in district. Their level of management need is above and beyond anything that we have the resources for in district to be able to maintain safely. So they are home pending placement, and we are currently looking for a program. Dr. Shank spoke to that a little bit. Ulster BOCES has not been one that we can send to when they rise to that level, but we have been in discussions, not only with them, but as a district and as a county, of what we need to be able to keep students in Ulster, but to be able to support their level of need, being that the, it's the emotional dysregulation. They need a more therapeutic setting, and right now, Ulster does not have a program, but we are working and in collaboration with them to hopefully build one for all of the county students that are in need of one. So I know that was a lot, in a little bit of time, but there we have the 18 students plus seven more. So it has been a year of profiling and looking at what our need is, and what we can potentially in the future bring to district. But right now, we do not have the resources to support those students, which led to the increase in budget, because right now, out-of-district is the only program that we have.
Any questions? John?
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I think we can all agree that special ed continues to grow, and we certainly want to provide all the services that are needed. But one of the criticisms in the past has been, how fast are we sending students out of district? Without taking perhaps a closer look at them. A couple of years ago, I spoke to a superintendent about bringing some programs back. We did bring back one program that I'm aware of. Can you tell us, have you looked at anything else that might allow us to bring students back into district, and maybe save us some money and provide those services here?
Sure. So currently, we're looking, right now, we send, I want to say approximately four or five that we've been profiling that are currently in the Rondau program, so the neighboring school district. We did bring in the life skills courses, and we initially piloted it with just special education students, then opened it up so that some general education students could be programmed into those elective courses. So we are looking to see if we were to make that program a little bit bigger, what that would look like, and could we potentially then bring those students that are currently being programmed at Rondau to district? I think that's where we're starting. The management needs would require, if we were looking at that profile of a student, we would be requiring far more resources than we have. So then we have to balance the cost effectiveness of what resources we would need. And I think the life skills programming would be the one that we would look at first, and we are doing that currently.
It's just that, you know, since I've been on the board, we keep looking at these percentages of special education up over 18%. And when we're hearing those numbers of three-quarters of a million, a million point five, whatever, it's just a thought to look at what we can do and bring them back in. But I appreciate it. I know that the difficult part of it is that you never know who's coming in or going out, and in a week, it could change by six or seven students. So thank you for that.
No, very welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, Jessica, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll move on to BOCES other. So we talked a little bit before about capital, that's up about 176%. Mr. Burns referenced that before. Our high school equivalency is up $40,000. We have many more students, Dr. Shank referred, mentioned before, in our career tech, not only in Ulster BOCES, but in Sullivan BOCES. Sullivan BOCES has the heavy equipment, and Dr. Shank talked about bringing that into Ulster BOCES in the new I Park program. We do have Matt Salamon in our athletic department, doing some more investments in our huddle program. We actually didn't budget for it this year, but we rolled some new stuff out with huddle during the athletic season, so that's reflected in the budget for next year. If we're having a board meeting on March 11th, the next budget workshop is on March 11th, which is next week, I'll be doing a full budget overview. And that's all I have tonight.
So at that next, next week's meeting, board members, as we discussed earlier, if you have something that you want to either amend or modify the budget, that will be the time to do so. So sharpen your pencils and come back and bring it forward. Mr. Napoli, thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Move on to reports and correspondence for myself. John, how are you making out with the Hall of Fame?
Just spoke with Patty Steinoff, one of the committee members. We're going to get together, and we're looking at three or four individuals and possibly a team for next year. I had proposed that perhaps we go every other year, or at least a two-year wait on a team, because the research is so significant to get done and find people and all that kind of stuff. But Patty assured me we'd have extra help this year, but I thought she said that last year, too. So we'll see, but we definitely have three or four individuals going in already. I can't divulge those names, I'm sworn secrecy, but we'll be announcing that at the end of the school year, and for next year, we'll have them. And it's doing very well.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to another good year.
Thank you. The Arts Committee? Jody's not here.
She's not here, but I think we're, tentative date is March 10th. That's, I think, what I saw, is the next meeting coming up.
Okay, thank you. Board membership? Yes?
Mr. President, Trustee Ramirez had prepared a summary for the Arts Committee.
I listened to the boss.
Yep, she is the boss. We have a committee member.
All right. Ms. Ramirez?
So our next meeting is March 10.
Sorry.
Took all the wind out of us, just to say that?
Sorry.
We were waiting for the, go have another donut. You need to go inside.
I'm not speaking anymore. No, we've had, we've had two, I think, very successful and fruitful meetings. We've defined our mission to elevate the arts and provide opportunities for our students and to celebrate their achievements. We've set some short and some long-term goals. At the next meeting, I think we're going to be seeking a liaison to the committee from the, from the district. And within the next couple of meetings, we will begin to invite faculty to come in and share their ideas and collaborate, and make sure that we all work together to, towards our shared mission.
Sorry that the superintendent stole your thunder on that.
And then the next meeting's March 10.
Next meeting's March 10. We got that one. All right. And thank you very much. Board membership?
Mr. President, last Friday, the 28th, I had the pleasure of spending a few hours with the superintendent who accommodated me on short notice. Thank you again, Madam Superintendent. And during my time in the district, I visited with the P-Tech, in the, I visited the P-Tech section of the building, and happened to, happened to cross a class just before they were starting, met with Mrs. Doe, thank you, Santiago, who gave me a really great overview of the class activities, and showed a lot of passion in some of the plans that she had for the program and the kids in the program. Also had an opportunity to spend time with a particular student who was extremely impressive and understood the value of collaboration, planning, communication, all of those things laid out within a three-to-four-minute conversation with her. It was a pleasure to be in the district. And while also over the weekend, spending some time with my wife, who was also very gracious, spending time with me at the some time with my wife, who was also very gracious, spending time with me at the Common Good, I learned that there was a open-mic poetry session that, where the majority of the presenters were students from the school, between 11th and 12th graders. I thought that was a wonderful event, a great expression, and I was wondering if the board would entertain some sort of promotional collaboration with the Common Good to that end, where they sponsor those types of events. Not sure what the capabilities are or what the legal parameters are, but if that could be, if that's a priority that we could create, it'd be great.
I'll meet with the superintendent and see what he can come up with.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Thank you. We'll move on. Our trustee representative, Jack Henry, is not here. Superintendent Lisa Wouse.
Just a few items tonight. On March 13th, Thursday, there's an Ulster County School Boards Association meeting. On the agenda are representatives from the State Education Department and some updates from them. The agenda is in your packet under, in Board Docs. Just let us know if you're going, so we can just give them a count. They don't need to. You can come last minute. It'll be held at the Ulster Bosse's Conference Center in New Paltz. We have some sign-ups from the board, but just a reminder, in case anybody else would like to, Read Across America, we're celebrating that this coming Friday at 7 o'clock, excuse me, during the day, March 7th, that's when it is. Some of the board members have emailed Mrs. I and will be reading to the classes. If anyone hasn't and you're interested in reading, please let us know. Let Marisol know or call Mrs. I directly, and she'll get you on the schedule. Want to call out some new Ellenville graduates. This is the winter graduation. I was not able to attend. I was ill, but I heard it was a really nice ceremony, and we have Alyssa Delacruz, Andrew Forrester, Gabriel Jarkeit, and Aiden Martucci, four graduates this year. We're really proud of them, and they're moving on to the next leg of the journey. And finally, March 19th will be a superintendent's conference day. It's our annual conference day in March where we really focus on wellness for the staff, and it's been, I think this is our third, third, our third annual superintendent's conference day focused on wellness. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Napoli?
Thank you. I have many updates regarding construction. I'll be happy to field any questions we have there. We also have Scott Butler here, because we're going to be awarding some Phase II contracts for work over the summer. And one of the things that I like to talk about, it kind of brings me a lot of joy and excitement, if you know me, I love my lunch and I love food, and this, and this past Friday, we had a farm-to-school pizza.
Great.
And it was incredible pizza. We had plain cheese, okay, kind of boring, but the cheese was stacked on like you couldn't believe. We had bison meatballs. I actually had some bison meatballs. It was delicious.
You ate beef?
And then there was another slice with venison sausage, and I had, I had one of each, and they were all incredible. So kudos to Debbie in the kitchen and all locally sourced items for our farm-to-school pizza.
Just want to say I'm proud of you for trying some meat, Vince.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move... Yes?
Vince, I don't know how you always get all these jobs that involve food, but on the report about the agenda for the pool, I had brought the concern up that, one of the problems I had with the pool is that it's dependent on, I guess the village is not involved, Lisa, but at least the town, and you have in two of your reports, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that the contract update has not yet been handled by the town. So my question is, how we get to where we're supposed to be on all of this? And is it looking more like three summers away, two summers away, or?
No, we are still on schedule. We have some time and some cushion in there. It's just a matter of the town adopting, their board adopting the contract with the pool design consultant, and then once that's done, all, I have to do some work here to get some stuff up to State Ed, so we are still within the schedule to get all of this done, and we're still on schedule to tie it into the completion of our construction work. I believe it's in the summer of '27. Scott, does that ring a bell?
Six for spring opening in '27.
Right, '26 into, into '27, so we are still on schedule for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Move on to Deputy Superintendent Kelly White.
Good evening. I wanted to provide an update regarding our My Brothers Keeper programs. So we, at the start of the school year, were notified that we were officially an MBK community, and one of the things that we've been waiting for, for a couple of months, was an invitation for our, two of our students to be inducted into the New York State MBK fellows program, and we will be inducting two students in May in Albany, and they'll get to participate in a year-long leadership development program, and we're really, really excited to move forward with this phase of our MBK work.
Thank you. Move on to...
Oh, John has a question.
Oh, John.
I'm sure that the administration that gets to work with this man is impressed by him every day, but I just want to let you know, I've worked with Mr. Frank Mulhern for the last 20 years, and what he does with our kids in his program is simply amazing.
It is.
And I just wanted to call him out on that. It's just tremendous. A couple of years ago with that group, I went to where they had a daily picnic and...
Can't bring him up, huh?
Yeah, and the difference between the beginning of the weekend and the end of the weekend, he said, on the way up, they had kids that weren't even talking. On the way back, they were leading discussions. So kudos to Mr. Mulhern.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Move on to Assistant Superintendent for Personnel and Curriculum and Instruction Support, Mr. Scott Prokosh.
Good evening. Just one item for myself. In my board report, you will see one of our newest onboarding ventures that we put out. So it was a sampling of a welcome video for any new SRP employee. We will be doing additional videos for substitutes as well as for the teachers' union, for the teachers' representatives, but it's just a way for us to have a more formalized process for onboarding of individuals, especially during the middle of a school year, when they don't receive some of the beginning sessions that we do at our conference days. And it's just a way to welcome members in, have them have access to a video that they can reference at any time that they would like, as well as with informational packet that will go home with them, that they can reference and utilize as they start their positions here in the district.
John?
Thank you. Scott, so acquiring employees has been a big push of ours and the techniques that go with it. So thank you for what you're doing here. I also want to point something else out that's the other end of that, and that's keeping employees. And so I'd like to encourage you, and I know you will, because HR is a very special place in my heart, that we do something to let them see every once in a while why they came here and why it's in their best interest to stay. So I hope you'll pursue that as well. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to personnel resolutions for this evening. Under 7.1 tenure appointment, upon a recommendation superintendent schools be resolved, Jamie Pennsylvania, who holds a professional New York State certificate in the area of teaching assistant, who upon completing a satisfactory probationary period ending March 23rd, 2025, has been moved.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Permanent appointment, 7.2, upon a recommendation superintendent schools be resolved, the appointment of Efren Lopez.
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 7.3, upon a recommendation superintendent schools be resolved, the appointment of Peter Mailey Jr., Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Worker One be made permanent.
So moved.
Been moved.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 7.4, New York State Assessment Test Review, upon a recommendation superintendent schools be resolved, that the following teachers be appointed for the New York State Assessment Test Review.
Move the list.
The list has been moved.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 7.5, memorandum of agreement with the SRPs, upon a recommendation superintendent schools be resolved, the MOA between the Elville Central School District and the ETS RPA. It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 7.6, substitute personnel, upon a recommendation superintendent schools be resolved, that the following substitute personnel be appointed for the 24-25 school year. The list has been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 7.7, appointment of assistant principal amended. Upon a recommendation superintendent schools be resolved, that the resolution passed by the Board of Education on August 27th, 2024 regarding the appointment of Narda Blair Powell be modified as follows. Be resolved upon a...
So moved.
It's been moved.
Okay.
Seconded. Discussion.
What? I'm sorry, Lisa, what was the reason for this? Was it, were we waiting on a certification?
Yes.
Okay.
She had an internship certificate. You cannot go into a track position with that certificate.
Got it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 7.8, Ulster County Bosse's Board Seat Nomination, resolve the Elville Central School District Board of Education nominate Willie Bruce Jr. to fill the one-year unexpired term on the Ulster County Bosse's Board. They're moved and seconded. Discussion.
Have we completed a background check?
My understanding is this, there is a vacancy. This is just for the one-year term. There's a seat that has a one-year term remaining on it.
Thank you, Willie, for volunteering.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 7.9, co-curricular personnel, upon a recommendation superintendent schools be resolved, the following co-curricular personnel be approved at the contractual rate. List has been moved.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one?
Mr. President, I'd just like the record to reflect that I abstained from voting on Resolution 78. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we are done with co-curricular. We'll move on to 7.10 probation extension. Upon a recommendation superintendent schools be resolved, that the probationary appointment of Bianca Rubila Gomez be extended for an additional six months with a new probation...
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
All those in, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 7.11, junior, senior high school extended day programs, upon a recommendation superintendent schools be resolved, the following junior, senior high school extended day personnel be approved.
Move the list.
The list has been moved.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. June Regents Review, upon a recommendation superintendent schools be resolved, the following teachers be appointed to, for June Regents Review. It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? 7.13, part-time point-five cleaner appointment, upon a recommendation of the superintendent of schools be resolved, that Robert Von Gretchen be appointed as a part-time point-five cleaner at a contractual rate of...
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Budget resolutions.
Motion move 8-1 and 8-2.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Education resolutions for this evening. 9.1, be resol...
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 9.2, volunteers. Resolve that the following volunteers be approved for the 24-25 school year.
Move the list with gratitude.
The list has been moved with gratitude. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Mr. Burns?
Yeah, I could have added this in my report on the Hall of Fame, Mr. President, but once again, Jack Carter is coming back to help with our outdoor boys and girls track team. He's a Hall of Fame member and was a tremendous coach and teacher in our district for many years, so very happy to see that. Our kids will benefit greatly from that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Move on to construction resolutions.
Motion move 10-1, 10-2, 10-3, and 10-4.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Under other, 11.1, resolve the Board of Education, Elville Central School District approve the agreement with Adelphi University C-Attached. Been moved.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 11.2, mileage. Resolve that the mileage rate be set at the current federal IRS rate per mile and that the adjustments be...
So moved.
It's been moved, but what is it?
Seventy cents.
Seventy cents.
It's not listed in the...
I know, we decided not to list it so that we don't have to keep bringing it back to you, if that's okay. So if they change it again, you know, we have the authorization to just set it at what the federal rate is, if that's okay with the board. I mean, we can include it and just bring it back all the time.
The resolution should indicate that. We're passing a resolution that has a specific number, unless you want to have a resolution that indicates, you know, the blanket authorization for the change of rate. That should be in the wording.
Good. Adjustments adjusted to be authorized in accordance with federal changes.
Well, we're going to do a blanket one for the adjustments, which is fine. If you guys want to entertain that, we'll modify the motion to reflect that.
Motion will modify that.